We're going to start with the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Secretary, would you like to do your roll call?
Sure. Member Philip Lantry?
Present.
Member Nanette Douglas?
Here.
Member Russell Alexander?
Present.
Member Megan Marshall?
Here.
Member Ruby Bridgeforth? Absent. Stacy Snyder?
Present.
Dawn Grisby?
Present.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum, and Ms. Snyder is a voting participant, member of the commission this evening.
Excellent. All right, first order of business is approval or disapproval of the minutes from our last meeting. Do I have a motion from anybody? Does anybody? Well, first of all, has everyone read the minutes? And everyone in agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Passes five zero.
Thank you. Next order of business on the action item list is discussion regarding appointments for a new chair and vice chair.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could, Jack Morgeson, attorney for the commission, and nice to see you all. You're all savvy veterans of the commission, so you've been through the election process before. We're due for the coming year for the election of chair and vice chair positions, so calling for nominations for the chair will be the first order of business, and the nominations will be voted upon if there are more than one in the order in which they are seconded. So you can call for nomination for chair at this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'd like to call for nominations for chair.
I'd like to nominate Phil Lantry for chair.
I'll second it.
All right, we've got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Mr. Chair, congratulations, you're in charge. Now we'll go for vice chair.
All right, now for vice chair. Would anybody like to nominate a vice chair?
I guess I'm going to make the nomination of Russell.
Okay, we have a nomination for Russell for vice chair.
Call for, Ms. Marshall, seconds. Okay.
Ms. Marshall, seconds. Is anybody else interested in vice chair, or no?
I would like to be vice chair. Am I allowed?
As an alternate, you're not going to be eligible at this time, Ms. Gray. I'm sorry.
Just wanted to know.
Of course.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion for Russell Alexander and a second.
Ms. Marshall.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes.
Okay. All right, congratulations to both of you.
Thank you. First order of business is ordinance number 2025-03, Friars Cove Lane, and this is ZMA 24-00014.
Good afternoon, Dagmar Estegara, Deputy Director for the Community Development. We're requesting this evening to postpone this item for next month's agenda.
Okay.
It's being withdrawn. The commission doesn't have to take action after the city's withdrawing the matter, so.
Correct. Yeah, we will be bringing this for next month, and new notices will be sent out to the, to the public.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right, so that brings us to, next order of business is ordinance number 2025-11. And I believe we have two cases, so I assume we should read them in together. So the first one, as I stated, is 2025-11, Tavarez Santiago, and that is CPA 24-00011. Then we also have ordinance number 2025-09, same applicant, and this is ZMA 24-00010.
So the cities will present both cases simultaneously, and then the commission will act and take each separately when making recommendation. Thank you, sir.
Good, good evening. Ralph Keith, Associate Planner with Community Development Department. The case before you tonight is for a comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendment for 1.13 acres of land known as Tavarez Santiago. Currently, the parcel has an existing county future land use of low-density residential and existing county zoning as RS2 residential. The applicant is proposing a future land use of low-density residential in the city, as well as a proposed zoning of R1 single-family dwelling. The development is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on the city facilities. Here's a graphic representation of the future land use of it. You can see where it is shown as low-density residential. As well as here is the current zoning in, in the county. Honored before January 25th, 2025, staff review, reviewed this project and recommends approval. Likewise, it is requested that the planning commission also recommend approval of ordinance number 2025-11 and ordinance number 2025-09 for the land use and zoning map amendments for the project known as Tavarez Santiago. Staff and the applicant are available for questions.
I have an initial question. Is this contiguous with the city limits?
Yes, so I believe it was last month, they had their approved, their approved annexation, which gave them up to a year to assign the future land use and zoning designation.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant present? Would you like to come up and speak?
We have questions.
Okay, does anybody from the commission have any questions for the applicant or the city staff? Okay.
Property's already been annexed, right?
Yes.
All right, at this time, we will allow for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment? On ordinance number 2025-11 or 2025-09? Okay, we have no public comment, so we will close the public comment session. Any other further questions from the commission?
If I could, Mr. Chair, just a reminder, when making a motion to express verbally that you've taken the 16 findings of the Land Development Code into consideration in support of your motion on both of these items.
Thank you. All right, would anyone like to make a motion?
For the first.
On ordinance number 2025-11.
I would like to make a motion to recommend the approval of ordinance number 2025-11 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. And how about the next one? Ordinance number 2025-09. Do we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to recommend the approval of ordinance number 2025-09 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Second.
All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next order of business is ordinance number 2025-12, and this is Nona Townhomes. This is an annexation, ANX 24-00006. And we have a second ordinance that is also related to this, so I'll go ahead and read that one in. That's ordinance number 2025-13, also Nona Townhomes, and this is a comprehensive plan amendment, CPA 24-00009.
Good evening, Ralph Keith, Associate Planner with Community Development. The case before you tonight is for annexation, a comprehensive plan amendment for 17.64 acres known as Nona Townhomes. The request both be, the applicant is proposing a future land use designation of medium-density residential and currently is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on the city facilities. Here is a graphic, a graphic representation. As you can see, the very top parcel is, is being annexed currently, and then the bottom three parcels are currently already within city limits. And then collectively, they make up the 17.64 acres. Here is a general representation of the future land use, showing the city future land use, as well as the county future land use. As well as a representation of the current zoning. Honored before January 25th, 2025, staff reviewed this project and recommends approval. Likewise, it is recommended that the planning commission also recommend approval for ordinance number 2025-12 and ordinance number 2025-13. Staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff at this time? Okay, is the applicant present? Would you like to come up? Thank you.
Well, Cameron Hindle, A Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida, here to represent the applicant and answer any questions you guys have.
Sir, can you, sir, can you lower your microphone a little bit? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? I have one question. In the responses, the 16 findings, there was something mentioned about another project on, on 192 that was already in the works.
There's a project just south of this that's already been approved by the City of St. Cloud. That's called Exchange Apartments. So just out, directly south of us, is a proposed apartment complex that also has a commercial piece that's directly adjacent to 192. So this piece provides a nice buffer between the LDR to the north of us and the HCR to the south of us.
And then I have another question. There was some information about improvements to, I believe it was Puffin Road?
Yes, sir. If this project moves forward, improvements to Puffin Road would be made with, during the STP process.
Would that be between Lilian Lee and 192?
It would go from Lilian Lee down to the project's southern boundary. Currently, there's actually already an STP, excuse me, with the county, approved for Puffin Road through the Exchange Apartments project. They have an approved STP to bring Puffin Road urban standards from 192 all the way to Lilian Lee Road. However, if this project goes before that project starts, then we would be required to, to build Puffin Road adjacent to our site.
And that would, that would be the only way into the site, other than it looks like there may be a tie-in into the development to the east? Would there be a tie-in into that development as well?
Yes, sir. There'd be a tie-in to development to the west of the project. Also, there's going to be a couple accesses off of Puffin Road, which will access through Lilian Lee. As future development comes to the south through the Exchange Apartment piece, ultimately, there will be a connection down to 192.
Okay. Do you have any, any other questions from our other planning commission members?
How many units?
This is not for units. This is just for the zoning, I mean, just for the land use.
My only other questions for the city.
Yeah, the matters are annexation and the land use here this evening, so these are the bigger, bigger picture issues on these two ordinances.
And I would like to mention, we, like I said, we do have high-density residential, commercial to the south of us, and we do also have MDR directly west of us. So this does fall within lines of the neighboring properties.
Is the MDR directly west? Is there any medium density in that area currently? Where it's, I'm looking at the future land use map for medium density, but do you know if there's any medium density there now?
There's a current existing subdivision there that falls under the medium density.
That may be more of a city question, anyway. Okay, does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? All right, at this time, we will open for public comment. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this, either of these two ordinances? Okay, we will close public comment at this time. And then, Russell, you said you had a question for the city staff?
Yes, I just wanted to refresh her on Lilian Lee Road.
Dagmar Estegara, Deputy Director. I'm sorry, what was the question again?
Lilian Lee Road, is that, is that still getting built up, or is that going to improve more than what it is?
Correct, correct. As you may recall, at the beginning of last year, there was a Lake Satia PUD approval, and with that, Lake Side at Satia, the requirement was to improve Lilian Lee Road all the way to Puffin. With the approval of the Exchange Apartments, then the approval was to improve Puffin Road all the way to Lilian Lee Road, but with a very transitional improvements. Now, with this development, they will be required then to do the same, match the improvements from the exchange to improve Puffin Road from 192 all the way to Lilian Lee Road as an urban road. The same as is going to be for Lilian Lee.
The area to the south of that is, that's county? That's not in the city limits?
No, yeah, that, south of this property, yes, south of this property, it is city, city jurisdiction. Correct. And the only piece that is not within the city limits is the piece to the north adjacent, closer to Lilian Lee. And that's the part that we're only annexing. And to answer your question, currently, there is a PUD under review. The applicant is redesigning the PUD, so at this moment, we don't have an actual unit count for the PUD. And to answer your question, yes, the property to the, to the west is MDR.
But is there any, I know it's future land use as in MDR, but is there anything built there now that's considered?
Yeah, the density in that subdivision is a little bit higher than six. And with the MDR, it can be developed up to 10,000 units per acre.
My biggest concern with this is just access, you know?
Correct.
The concern is Puffin Road not being completed between Lilian Lee and 192.
No, it will be. It will be completed. There is a requirement from the Land Development Code that they, that any developer is required to make improvements to the, to the entirely of the length of their project. So this project will make the improvements from Lilian Lee to the bottom south of their property, and then Exchange Apartments is going to take it from there all the way to 192.
But we just don't know what the timeline is on that, right?
Correct.
Partial, and then the rest of it gets built later.
Correct, because the responsibility right now of the applicant is the length of their development. As you know, with also with the approval of the Lake Satia and Tyson and the exchange, there was a requirement to do a study analysis to create a, some sort of transportation study to take in account all of these developments in this area. And that's how the, the study allocated the improvements for Lilian Lee and for Puffin Road. And eventually, once the commercial portion, south of the Exchange Apartments, when that comes in, it will trigger a possibly a traffic light. But right now, we don't have any proposals.
Understood. All right, does anybody else have any questions? Sure.
I'm also the engineer record for the Lilian Lee Road. We have a county pre-con that's going to be coming in the next week or two, and then that roadway will go under construction and will be widened to a median section.
Would there be an entrance into this? I mean, I know you don't have a master plan yet, but potentially, would there be an entrance off of Lilian Lee as well, or only?
There's, if you look at the map up there, there's a small property between us and Lilian Lee Road.
So, yeah, so you would have to get a portion of that property to be able to do that.
You'd have to buy that property, which at the time, the owner wasn't willing to sell it, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. If there's no questions, I'd like to call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2025-12 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code. Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Any, there was nobody opposed, right? Okay, motion passes. Ordinance number 2025-13. Like to call for a motion?
I would like to make a motion to recommend the approval of ordinance number 2025-13 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Everybody on the mic, everybody's got a vote?
No.
Okay, I have a no.
So, by show of hands, the ayes?
Four to one.
Okay, passes four to one, Mr. Alexander.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
All right, next order of business is ordinance number 2025-10, Marina, LDC update. And this is case number CDA 25-0001.
Good evening, Dagmar Estegara, Deputy Director. This item in front of you is at the request of City Council, and one of the initiatives for the city this year is to strengthen our lake protections and marina protections into the city. So this is our first step to amend our land development code, to create, to adopt language that would create standards for commercial marinas. So this, this is a citywide initiative, and it will establish minimum requirements for permitting, siding, design, construction, and operation of commercial marinas. It would apply to marinas that are, that have four or more slips, that provides birthing for one or more boats. They have boat ramps or fueling or vessel maintenance and boat transfers facilities. This ordinance does not apply to private marinas and docking facilities for personal use, does not apply for master concept plans in the mixed use, does not apply to marinas and docking facilities that are man-made on ponds or replace or replacement of existing marinas facility that does not increase the existing capacity. This ordinance requires these commercial marinas to be owned by either an entity or an HOE. In the case that is in a subdivision, it will have to be built in a separate dedicated tract. It will require to have landscape as established in the Land Development Code. It will have to provide a 20-foot wide environmental swell. No fertilizer or permanent irrigation will be allowed, and no alteration dredging into the lake, and no boat watching components required. It is a staff recommendation that this council approve ordinance number 2025-10, and this is a city initiative, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Could you go back to the first slide? So would all of these have to apply?
No.
Or just one of?
One of them. If he, if he has five or more, it applies. If he has a boat ramp, it would, it would apply.
Unless it's private.
Unless it's private, correct.
Okay.
I have a question regarding, if you go to the next slide, sorry, the next one. Okay, I'm a little bit confused where, where we would require landscaping, but then not allow irrigation? Is there, is it Florida-friendly landscaping that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Typically, irrigation brings some minerals through the water that are sometimes not beneficial to the wetlands, existing wetlands, and that's why.
From reclaimed water you're talking about, right?
Reclaimed water, and all potable water, sometimes, if we don't want to mix those minerals and chemicals that are in the potable water into the natural state, state of a lake.
Okay, so they would have knowledge of it being Florida-friendly landscaping, not?
Correct. That is part of the landscape requirements. It will have a specific types of plantings and trees that are will be required.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the no alteration to lake depth or dredging. Because I'm trying to figure out, how would you create the marina without some dredging?
It will be, it will have to be, if, no. That the dredging criteria will be if they are ready, the lake is existing, and that there is already the depth in there, that it would already facilitate the, the depth to have boats. Of course, for the construction of the ramp or the marina, yeah, there's got to be some dredging, but not, not that the marina is going to require the lake to be deeper in order to operate. That's a good question.
Who, who is the governing body that would prevent them from going into the, to a certain distance from the boat ramp? Would that be South Florida Water Management?
Correct, and we also incorporating distance requirements, siding requirements in this ordinance as well, that will have to be 200 feet into the, no more than 200 feet into the lake, or you can use the measurement of the shoreline, one and a half inch per 10 square feet in size. And it cannot, what's the other thing? It would have to, if a boat ramp is proposed, one and a half, some of three feet per each lot will be granted in the common facility, not to, with a minimum of 200 feet. So there's going to be requirements of how, also how in, to the, into the lake it can go, and how big it can be. But yes, those regulations are going to be the same as the South Water Management District.
Okay. Yeah, this is interesting to me. We, you know, we have the subdivision, I think it's called Lakeside on Hickory Tree. I'm, I'm not sure.
Oh, Twin Lake.
Twin Lakes.
Twin Lakes.
Right.
And they have a facility that lifts the boat and then transfers it over to the lake, so there's actually no exchange. At least, I believe that's the concept, is there's no exchange of water from people's yards, from runoff. and irrigation and fertilizer getting into the lake.
Right, right.
So that's good that we're thinking about the future of our lakes here.
Yeah.
Preventing nutrients, nitrogen, that sort of thing from getting into the lakes.
Yeah, and since, as you know, we are annexing a lot of these areas, we're preparing ourselves for these properties that are going to be contiguous or next to lakes. So we want to make sure that as they come in and they get developed in the city, we are prepared to make some enforcements or apply some standards.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Any other questions?
No, I think you covered it.
All right, well, we have to ask for public comment, right?
Yeah.
Is anybody in the audience interested in making any public comments? No? Okay, we'll close public comment. So any other discussion or questions for the city staff? Okay. All right, I'd like to call for a motion then for ordinance number 2025-10, Marina Land Development Code update.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance. Which one is it?
2025-10. No, -10.
-10, sorry.
Okay, I have a first.
Because there's no 16, right?
That's right. Yep.
It is a 16.
As written, right? As written. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next Planning Commission meeting on March 18. And Christie, I've already let you know that I will not be here for that meeting. So Russell, you have a month to prepare to be the chair of that meeting. And so we need to adjourn. I'd like to ask, is there any motions for adjournment?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, meeting adjourned.